Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the Monday, March 11th, 2013 Waschuggah City Council Meeting. Ask that you please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Wyatt, would you like to start us out?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. He didn't know that he was going to do that, but I'm going to give him an opportunity to introduce himself here in just a moment. Rose, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Boger.
Here.
Councilmember Plensky.
Here.
Councilmember Greenlee.
Here.
Councilmember Lindsay.
Here.
Councilmember McDaniel.
Here.
Councilmember Shoemaker.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here. Thank you. Amendments to the agenda. I am going to add an amendment to the agenda under New Business, Item B, Resolution Regarding the Columbia River Crossing. It is probably appropriate for us to take it up as an agenda item even if late, rather than just under council member comments. Are there any other amendments to the agenda? For the benefit of the public, we did have a council workshop just prior to this meeting that had a few different items that were discussed. One was a presentation by our police department on some of their activities and also their goals for 2013. We had a housekeeping item under community development, or, excuse me, under Public Works in regards to potential vacations of a couple of city streets down in the Port area, and then also a presentation from our finance director in regards to some IT services and taking some of those services in-house. So, that brings us to this evening's council meeting. At this time, I would ask Kyle Kinnon to please come forward to the front of the room, and our other officers that are here as well, if you'd like to come up. Chief, if you'd like to come up and join us as well.
Backstop him just in case, in case he gets mauled. He says he doesn't want the words back.
I'll provide entertainment.
Okay. This is always a pleasure to be swearing, one of our newest police officers. Now, if you would, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Kyle Kinnon.
I, Captain.
Do you solemnly swear that I am a citizen of the United States?
Do you solemnly swear that I am a citizen of the United States?
And of the state of Washington?
And of the state of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington?
And the Constitution and the laws of the state of Washington.
And will to the best of my judgment, skill, and ability?
And will to the best of my judgment, skill, and ability.
Truly, faithfully, diligently, and impartially?
Truly, faithfully, diligently, and impartially.
Perform the duties of police officer?
Perform the duties of police officer.
In and for Waschuggah, Washington?
In and for Waschuggah, Washington.
As such duties are prescribed by law?
As such duties are prescribed by law.
I further swear that I will be ever mindful?
I further swear that I will be ever mindful?
Of the trust that has been placed in me by the officials and citizens of the city of Waschuggah?
Of the trust that has been placed in me by the officials and citizens of the city of Waschuggah?
And will make every effort to live up to that trust?
And will make every effort to live up to that trust.
So help me God. So, congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Thanks, everybody.
You can read mine almost as good as you can read yours.
Hey, Ron, does the new guy wash all the cars?
It's a good idea.
I have mine dirty.
I was going to say, Chief, Kyle, the floor is yours.
Now, we're fortunate to have Kyle with us. Just briefly, Kyle comes with over ten years of long experience. He had his first job at Fort Towns, and then Ballarat. And then they moved him away to experience island lifestyle, and that came back to us here in Washington. So, we're blessed to have Kyle. Going through the FTO program, and Alan Rose.
Excellent.
Kyle, now he gets to hear Kyle's portion. Come on, Anthony.
Well, council, mayor, and Waschuggah, I'm very excited to be here, and looking forward to working and getting through the FTO program. This week was my first week. Everyone's been great to me, and so far I've had a good time, so I hope to continue.
Well, welcome. Thank you again.
Thank you.
With that, we will move to public comment.
Any of those members of the public that would like to address council? And at this point, I would ask Wyatt, if you'd please come forward and introduce yourself and what you're here for this evening.
I'm Wyatt Akins, the son of Kyle Akins. I am here for my requirements for the citizenship in the community, working towards my Eagle. I'm hoping to get that. That's my big goal for this year, so that's why I'm here. Thank you.
Excellent. Welcome, Wyatt. Are there any other members of the council that would like to, or of the public that would like to address council? John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. I may not have heard it, but I don't believe you asked for public comments after the roll call of the workshop.
We, I did, on both of them.
You did?
I did.
I didn't hear it either, and I wondered if I just answered. I don't know.
I heard that he did. You did.
He did?
Yeah.
It's funny, that crossed my mind, too.
That's okay.
Not a worry. But, John, if we could get your name and address, please?
John Wagner, 36710 Southeast 20th Street, Waschuggah. From what I could gather from the end of the workshop, I guess I would stand opposed to any resolution involving the CRC light rail project done tonight, for the obvious reason that I agree you shouldn't have a workshop, talk about it, the public's not here to hear about it, comment about it, and then you take action. But...
It's not what we talked about.
So, I hope you don't take any actual resolution that you don't have before you, that you can't discuss the details of. I think that'd be very inappropriate. But while we're on the CRC, I, you know, I don't follow this that close, but it just seems like the unbelievable amount of money and time that has been wasted on this issue, with issues of light rail and the bridge, and as I understand it, the Commandant of the Coast Guard has to sign off on the height of the bridge. Some engineers spent, what, $140 million, sort of forgot to ask that little question. That might set people back a little bit. But as I recall, there was a statement by Senator Patty Murray, State of Washington, who made a comment, and I guess I could stand corrected, "But there will be no bridge without light rail." Now, I just went on the Internet the other day and looked up a couple of things here. Just from 2000 on, we've had two wars, the estimated cost would be three trillion, that's with a T, each trillion's a thousand billion, two tax cuts for the rich, Medicare D, TARP, AIG bailouts, more interest on the debt than all presidents combined, 85.7% increase in unemployment, stock market crash, housing, banking collapse, $700 billion in a three-page bill without a discussion in Congress was given to these institutions that were too big to fail. And now, here we are, talking about how we're going to have tolls on 205, how we're going to pay for a bridge that could cost between $1 and $3 billion, but yet, on the federal level, $700 billion, without a discussion, three-page bill, no strings attached. Just, here, take taxpayer money, $700 billion, there's a video of it, you know, if you follow the news, you'd know that that's right. I don't believe, the years that I've spent as a union lobbyist in Olympia, that a resolution from the city of Waschuggah is going to change one vote. I'm sorry, but it's a tight year this year because of the school mandate, there's a budget deficit, so getting money out of the legislature is going to be pretty difficult this year. So, I guess I'll go back to comments I've made in the past. I think the city council does a great job. I think you ask a lot of really good questions, and I think you ought to stick to things that are important to the city of Waschuggah, and that would be the sewer rates, the water rates, the sidewalks, infrastructure, the things that you do best, and I think you do a great job. I've said that here numerous times. The Columbia River Crossing, if Patty Murray's correct, there will be no bridge without light rail. So, the whole light rail discussion is a distraction and is something that will probably keep the project from happening. Do we need a new bridge? I think everybody, I went to the county commission meeting where they passed the resolution. I was pretty disappointed to sit there for three hours. During that time, I stopped and ended up sitting next to, I think he had four terms as a mayor of Vancouver, Royce Pollard, and I know he was retired military, I think he was a colonel. And I mentioned to him, I just whispered, I said, "You know what? For one month in Afghanistan, we could chrome plate that bridge." So, I guess, you know, I guess just in a humorous light, we never declared war, only Congress can do that. We didn't do it in Vietnam. I don't think we did it in Korea. I don't think we did it in Iraq. We didn't do it in Afghanistan. We just go into these wars, and we spend trillions of dollars, and it's a horrible thing, but maybe if we just didn't declare war on Oregon, let's just go to war with them, and we'll get billions of dollars. They'll get billions, we'll get billions, because all we gotta do is call it a war, and you'll get more money than you can spend and build that bridge any way you want. But other than that, with the height being wrong, with the engineers not even asking the questions, with the light rail toll on 205, this is a mess. And I'm not sure this mess will ever get corrected in my lifetime. And the resolution that you're talking about, if you're going to have one, which you're entitled to do, and be resolved, whatever the city council agrees, if you have the votes, but I'd appreciate it if you didn't do it tonight, so that people could, of course, there's a reporter in the room, and it'll work to get out in the local newspaper, and then people with strong feelings one way or the other could have a chance to make those comments made prior to you voting on a resolution that, as I said, I previously said, probably not going to have an awful lot of an impact.
Thank you, John.
Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thanks, John. Richard.
Richard Hamby, Waschuggah. I live outside of the urban growth boundary, so I didn't speak on Saturday, but I just want to thank David Scott for his discussion of local transportation needs and the intricacies of funding. It was, it was very informative, I think. I don't sit up there, actually, I don't even vote for you guys. I don't pay the city's taxes, but I'm thinking that there was a lot of things in there that struck me that really needed attention. For instance, the fact that your street maintenance is primarily funded from real estate excise taxes. There's no logical connection between the need for maintenance and the amount of real estate activity, and he called it unsustainable, what you're doing now, and there's many more. You were all here to hear the presentation, but that was very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Anyone else from the public that would like to address council? Good evening, Joe.
Young man, I don't know if I ever told you this, but I respect what you guys do, because I couldn't do this kind of stuff. There's two reasons why I'm up here. One of them is...
Joe, we do need your name and address, please.
You want my name? You've got to keep it legal, right? Let's keep it legal. Name is Joe Levek, 2682 Northwest Norwood Street, Camas, 98607. I want to talk about two things tonight. I'll wait until after the Camas-Washuggah Economic Development Association has their coming up here, because I've got a lot to say about those guys. Listen, I've been out here for about ten years. I'm an old builder-developer. I lost nine and a half million dollars last time around. When I came up here, I wanted to get back on my feet. To get back on your feet when you're a builder and developer, you've got to know what you're doing. You have to have opportunities. You need land, you need financing, you've got to build, and you've got to sell. To do that, you've got to have a supply, and you've got to have a demand. I came here, and I looked around, and what I found out before I decided what to do next is that there was a big, bad attitude against business development and development attitude in this community. Very bad. I used to know this country when it was a free country. I mean, free. This country is not free like it used to be. Anyhow, to make a long story short here, I made a proposal to bring in a lot of money in this community, $473 million, and I got turned down, and that hurt. Took me a long time to figure out how to do that. Create 800 jobs, create a lot of stuff that could have done a lot of good to this community. Then they turn around and they build a project in Camas for 51 units called Camas Ridge Apartments, which I think are very nice. I was going to build the same thing. Right now, their rent knows for $400 a month more than a two-bedroom apartment in the neighborhood, and they call it affordable housing. Millions of dollars are being wasted in this community, and people aren't even talking about it. But that's not the main reason I'm commenting here. The main reason I'm in here, besides being a builder and developer, it cost me $15 million to know what I know more than anything else, or I appreciate more than anything else, besides being a crusader for the Constitution, and I'm not a Tea Party member, and I'm not a radical guy, I just love my country, and I don't like what's happening to it, and I don't like what's happening in this community. You people have good intentions, and that's important. You've got to go in the right direction. What I'm proposing tonight is to pass a resolution. I pass a resolution to pray to God, not, not for a church, not for religion, not to do anything unconstitutional, pray for the same God that our forefathers prayed for. And keep it simple, it could be 30 seconds, less than a minute. Don't sell any church, no faith, no religion. Pray to God, and what are you going to pray for? You pray the breast of meeting to give you guys wisdom that you all need and knowledge on what, to make the right decisions. And basically, I'd like you to make a motion right now, right now, tonight, don't wait three weeks, don't check with your attorneys on this stuff. Let a judge prove to you that God doesn't exist. Let any judge or any Supreme Court prove to you that God does not exist. You know what? Nobody can. If they can, I have a lot of ways to prove that he does, and that's what keeps me younger and happy and energetic. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
But I'll be back to talk about this Camas-Washuggah Economic Development Association. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public that would like to address council? Okay, moving into our consent agenda, this evening, we've got a consent agenda that contains three items. Our council minutes from February 19th, 2013, our workshop minutes of February 25th, 2013, and our regular accounts payable claims in the amount of $428,632.93. And I will be pulling items A and B from the consent agenda for just a quick item before your approval on that. So, right now, we're looking for approval just of the regular accounts payable claims.
Mr. Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that we approve the regular AP claims as described.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. On the two sets of minutes, there's one error that appears on both of them on the attendance of those, the press. It notes that Dawn was, from the post record, was here for both of those, and she was not. So, amending those minutes to take them out and show that Dawn was absent without being excused.
You weren't excused, Dawn?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, wasn't Heather here in her stead?
Heather Atchison, correct.
On the second one, yes.
On the second one, okay.
Heather, yes.
So, for February 25, Heather?
Yes, sir.
So, with those three changes, taking Dawn out of both and adding Heather in for the February 25th, what would council's pleasure be with the minutes?
Mr. Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that we approve the council minutes for the council meeting of the 19th and the workshop of the 25th, incorporating the changes that you described.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Takes us to New Business, Agenda Bill 8-13, a public hearing in regards to the Port of Camas-Washuggah Development Agreement. Mr. Canick?
Thank you, Your Honor, council. Before you tonight is an application for a development agreement known as the Steigerwald Commerce Center. The applicant is the port of Camas-Washuggah, and the consultant is McKay and Spizito. Proposed development agreement between the port and Camas-Washuggah and city council will apply to approximately 125 acres, which unfortunately, you can't see up here right now. This agreement will establish rules, regulations, and standards for the area, which is zoned heavy industrial and located at the east end of the port's existing industrial park. A draft of the development agreement was provided to city council as well as the associated exhibits. The exhibits were provided in your Dropbox earlier. The, we distributed this evening, I distributed the update to the ordinance and the update to the actual development agreement. There is some language in there that we made changes to relating to Interlocal Act. We removed references to the Interlocal, Interlocal Act because it wasn't applicable, as well as attorney fees and litigation. We removed those portions and made some other minor changes that were discussed with our legal counsel as well as the applicant and their consultant and their attorney. Actually, right up until about 4:45 this evening. So, that was all ironed out, and that is what is before you this evening. As part of this development agreement, it's establishing standards that will create an attractive and cohesive development throughout the site. The port will establish a design review committee to review proposed developments to ensure compliance with their standards. And like previous development agreements, the development site will vest to the codes and effect at the time the development agreement is approved. So, a draft development agreement was submitted on October 29th, 2012. It was reviewed among staff and the applicant and their consultant over the next three months, and then formal application was made on February 4th of this year. A combined notice of application and optional CPA DNS was issued on February 15th, 2013. As I mentioned, the draft agreement was submitted in October, and the formal application submitted in February of this year. Over that three months, the port and the port's consultants and attorneys all worked together collaboratively to put the final touches on this agreement. We all know that it didn't happen in three months. This is just the last effort of a very long process. It's been a pleasure to work with all the parties involved on both sides of the table. In the end, this agreement is about economic development, and it's about jobs in our port and our community. I'm very happy to bring this development agreement forward because I believe it is something that we all can be proud of. With that, the recommended action is to hold a public hearing to take public testimony. If council desires, make a motion to read the ordinance by title only and pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner.
Thank you, Mitch. With that, I will open the public hearing and ask anyone from the public or the proponents that would like to speak on the matter to step forward to the microphone and give your name and address. Richard.
Richard Hamby, 37015 Southeast Gibson Road, Waschuggah. I've made comments in favor of this more than once already, so I'm not going to be redundant again, but just to be official here, you need to support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Larry?
Larry Keister, 4402 Southeast Zitzelberger Road, Waschuggah, Washington. I also have supported this development in the past, and for the record, I want to just reiterate the importance that this opportunity provides our community for economic growth, and I urge you to vote in favor of it.
Thank you, Larry.
Hey, I apologize. I thought when I saw a port of Camas-Washuggah Development, I thought it was association.
No.
I've been attending their meetings. They're talking about asking you guys for more money. Don't give them anything. I'd like to have another meeting on this. You're wasting your money there. Now, they hired a guy by the name of Ed Hove.
Joe, this testimony is only on the item that's in front of us for this public hearing.
Hove is a good man. I'm sorry, I apologize.
That's okay.
I didn't know you guys, I didn't know about that.
You can come back...
I've got a lot to say about Queda.
You can come back anytime, and we have another opportunity for the public at the end of the meeting, Joe. Anyone else that would like to speak in regards to the development agreement with the port of Camas-Washuggah? Last and final call for anyone that would like to speak to Agenda Bill 3, or, excuse me, 813. Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing and turn the matter back to council.
Mr. Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that we read the ordinance by title only.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
An ordinance approving a development agreement between the city of Waschuggah and the port of Camas-Washuggah, providing for vesting of regulations and establishment of design standards for the development of the site known as the Steigerwald Commerce Center.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second to pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner. Councilmember Boger.
Mitch, I got your changes at 4:57, and I was either already in the workshop session or I was driving, and I couldn't really fully digest them. I wonder if you can go over the changes that were made from the, and this is different from the version that's been out, is put out there for the public to look at.
As I mentioned, there's a few things based on, based on our attorney's advice and based on after discussion with the applicant and the applicant's consultant. As I mentioned earlier, the items related to the interlocal agreement, it initially was titled on Page 1, Development Agreement and Interlocal Agreement. All those references to interlocal agreement were removed as it's a development agreement, and it's not an interlocal. There's some tense language, you know, the port has proposed a preliminary plat, we instead intends to apply for preliminary plat. Set of urban growth boundary, they had UGB, they had UBG, so we made that change. The date for the transportation study, it was updated in January, so that was modified, as well as an addendum to that which was in March, was modified as well. Again, those are within the exhibits, and we changed, again, tense preliminary lot layout to conceptual lot layout, and we changed some language, removing requirements to go to a hearing examiner for a plat. We just referenced our Title 17, so depending on what process they go through, it may be a short plat, where they don't have to go before a hearing examiner, so again, that's to the benefit of the port and of us as well. We don't have to take everything to a hearing examiner if it's a short plat. And we removed building code standards. There was a reference to building standards that they could vest to, but they can't do that, so we removed that as well. And I think really, aside from kind of some text and formatting issues, that is the bulk of it.
Well, it seems like there's only a couple that are really substantive.
And applicable law, Section 19, we took that out, too, as well, and attorney fees. It said applicable law and attorney fees, and then it talked about litigation and whatnot... It said applicable law and attorney fees and then it talked about litigation and whatnot. We just, we took that out. Again, based on, that was our attorney's advice. We discussed that with the applicant and their consultant and they agreed.
Okay. Can I just go over what I think of the substantive ones real fast? Page seven, well, I have a redlined version thanks to the applicant. Thank you very much. This is what kind of, where I got lost with it. The, section six, subparagraph F, the preliminary plat shall be reviewed, reviewed consistent with Washougal Municipal, Municipal Code seventeen point one-two. That's the part that took out the hearing examiner process and that's to comply with the RCWs.
Yes.
On plats.
Yep.
Okay, good enough. CEPa process, paragraph six, subsection J. Port exercises right to act as a lead agency.
Yes.
So the port wanted to reserve its right to be the lead.
Yeah, actually, the change that we made there is I added site plan review. Just initially it stated preliminary plat. I added site plan, site plan review because site plan could be subject to CEPa as well. And again, preserve the port's right to act as lead agency if they so chose.
Okay, ten B, it looks like there's a new paragraph added. Page ten, well, it's on the redlined version, page ten.
Yes, again, this is related to the traffic study and the improvements necessary at Thirty-second and Addy. In the future, once they reach a certain amount of trips, that will cause an intersection to fail. So we know what that trip number is, but once they get to that point, instead of automatically doing the mitigation necessary, they'll study the intersection again and ensure that that is the correct mitigation. It's possible that there'll be other changes in that area, state route changes and whatnot that would facilitate the need for this to not even be there.
Yeah, the background traffic could drop.
Exactly. And again, it was a benefit to the port for them not to have to automatically do mitigation once that threshold was reached.
Okay. Paragraph fourteen. Add new phrase to the maximum extent available under the terms of the Washougal Municipal Code and/or latecomer fees pursuant to latecomer agreements. What's the effect of that?
This that they were entitled to pro-rata share and we were just establishing what the criteria for that share, that share coming back to them would be if they had any credits or latecomer. If they established a latecomer agreement, it would be regulated by the municipal code that we have and whatever latecomer agreement they would put in place.
Okay, one I wholeheartedly agree with, dropping the attorney's fees provision due to my own experiences with development agreements. I couldn't imagine having that in there.
Yes, and we removed that. And again, the applicant and their applicant's consultant and attorney all agreed.
Okay, were there any changes to the ordinance?
The only change on the ordinance was related to in the, in the, I'm sorry, what whereas it would be. It's one, two, three, four, five, six, the seventh whereas. We added that the city council finds, I'll read it as it states now. The city council finds that entering into this agreement is in the public interest and that entering into a development agreement benefits public health, safety, and welfare by providing long-term economic benefits to the city.
And we do have the escape clause for, if there's a significant change and or seriously threatens public health and safety, but we do have that in here.
Yes.
Okay. Could you point it, I can't, I missed it. Cities' reserved authority, paragraph fifteen B. Yep, yep. Okay, I'm happy with it. It's a great project. Please forgive me for putting my land use lawyer hat on, but I just can't, I have to do it, so I apologize, but.
No problem. Other questions from council, comments? Okay, I've got a motion and a second to pass, post, and pardon?
I was just gonna say.
I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say I drove down through there the other day and it's really gonna, it's very exciting. It's just gonna be a wonderful addition.
Any other council members? Okay, I've got a motion to pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
If I, if I could just take a moment of personal privilege and thank Dave Rip and the port commissioners and McKay and Spizito and our staff for bringing this to fruition. There's a lot of work here over at least four years. So thanks to all of you people.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. I'll pass that on to the commission. Going to newly added item B, a resolution regarding the Columbia River Crossing. We had some brief discussion in the workshop, at the end of the workshop earlier in regards to Saturday's town hall meeting and potentially bringing forth a resolution to, to our next workshop and then to a council meeting for adoption as well. So to continue that conversation, any thoughts on behalf of council members? Connie Jo?
Yeah, there's some points that I was just getting ready to add when we called dinner. So, you ready?
I am.
Thank you, Dave. The federal money promised Washington is not designated to the CRC and it will take money away from other highway projects, which would adversely affect our Highway fourteen project. Tell me when I should, go ahead, go ahead. The funding mechanism is called the new starts federal funding. That's where they hope to get the eight hundred and fifty million dollars. But it is not guaranteed. It was stated Saturday that it was guaranteed and I want to know, I want it stated clearly in a resolution that it is not guaranteed by the federal government. And that if the federal government doesn't give the full eight hundred and fifty million, then the state and local what's the right word there? That the state and local governments must make up the difference, which will put Washougal taxpayers at risk. Another point that I'm not sure if it's on the paperwork that, or in the comments that we mentioned, so I'd like to just reiterate, no tolls on I two oh five. And I think we should defund Columbia River Crossing. Of all the blunders that have happened, all the mistakes, I think we should get, ask for our money back. I think that's all I have for this moment. Thank you.
You would actually want that portion in the resolution?
The part about money back? No. The defunding?
That's, that's what we're asking at this point is what parts you actually want in the resolution? When we go back to tape, trust me, we'll pick up on that, so. Other thoughts from council members?
Although I have heard.
This is just general discussion at this point, so.
I have heard that it's possible to go back to these engineers that have designed a bridge that's, doesn't meet standards. It's interesting, though.
Dave?
I believe that we've provided now the county resolution, the Oregon resolution, and the battleground resolution as examples of the types of things we're looking for. And I know that Dave is very good at, at winnowing these down to make them significant without being too wordy.
And the letter from Congresswoman.
And the letter from Congresswoman Herrera Butler.
Any other items? Brent?
I had made my points in the workshop and I don't really have any to add, so as long as you have those, Dave.
Anything else that we potentially want into the first draft of the resolution? Just again, for the benefit of the, the public that may not have been here earlier, the council is considering a resolution that would basically not support the Columbia River Crossing project, light rail, had all in there, so. Connie Jo?
Can we encourage? Is it Larry? It said he didn't want us to pass it tonight. Help him understand that we were never intending to pass anything tonight. It was just discussion. We're gonna consider passing it in two weeks.
So in regard to, if there are no other items and you can certainly continue to send items, Dave's direction, I would say make him the point person at this point for any comments or any, any items you want in there or not. Any further discussion as far as the timing for this thing moving forward? I've heard, bring it forward and bring it forward to council agenda. I've heard let's confirm that we actually have a time crunch for this. Any other comments on that? We could certainly follow up with the, the folks in Olympia to find out at least what their best estimation is of when something will no longer be useful in any of the discussions on the, on the funding and/or the budget.
So are you asking for our input on that?
Mm-hmm.
Well, my opinion is that, you know, we've, we've pretty much made a commitment that when possible, we would workshop it one week and pass it or consider it the next week. So I, I would like to consider that our discussion tonight would be workshopping it and therefore we could put it on next week's agenda to.
Two weeks.
Sorry, that's gonna be a habit to break, isn't it? To be considered. And that we get to communicate with Dave, not with each other, are, are the facts that we'd like included and then be able to have good discussion in two weeks and then vote on it.
Jeffrey?
I'd have to say that I'm looking forward to that discussion. So many different concerns and issues have been brought up this evening, both at workshop and just now. So, you know, without a document really in front of me or a series of documents, I really don't feel like I can have a, you know, any sort of discussion or add this, take away this, you know, rewrite or reword, you know, a statement. So I'm looking forward to having something that would be representative of the city of Washougal. So that's, that's what I want to see.
Any other items? Paul?
I also am, am concerned here that this is supposed to be a deliberative body. And I would like to see something on paper that we can talk about in workshop and then think about for two weeks before we vote on it. I also, and find it a little odd that in all of the discussions of changing to this format, it was consistently said. Now, you can parse it with, well, it was only concerned with the administration. But it was consistently said that we would workshop it one time and then vote on it two weeks later. If there is in fact a compelling emergency, then that can go by the wayside. But I am more than a little offended that at the very first meeting in this new format, we want to short circuit the promise. And if we do that, it, it's a clear precedent that the promise to workshop one period and then give two weeks of deliberation to the, to the meeting where you actually vote on it doesn't hold. That the precedent, the precedent has destroyed it in the very first opportunity. And I'm, I don't know what to say about that.
Dave? During the discussions, we made provisions for urgent matters. This seems to me to qualify as an urgent matter. Thank you.
I, urgent matter to whom? Is this an urgent matter to the city of Washougal?
Yes, I think it is. There are people at the county and state level who want to hear from us. And this is the best, according to Senator Ann Rivers', method to convey how we feel about it. She specifically said on Saturday that a resolution is a good way to convey these things.
Okay, anything else from council? Connie Jo?
I think out of respect for the rest of us, our integrity should speak, that we aren't intentionally in setting out to insult anyone. It's out of our control that we planned to do a town meeting, we chose the topic of transportation, and the Senate is saying, get us what you want us to know immediately because we're voting on this what, sometime in April and now because we only meet every two weeks. We need to act quickly. So again, considering our integrity and our willingness to work together as a team, which we've been doing really well for the last year, I'd like you to take that into consideration. This is not anything personal. This is a timeframe that we have to work within.
Okay, any last items? Dave, I think we've got our marching orders. We will endeavor to bring a first draft back to, well, not bring it back to you, get it sent out to all of you as quickly as possible so that we've got time for some give and take individually from council members back to Dave. Please do not reply to everybody. If, if we get to the point where you accidentally hit a wrong button, we will probably send out some messages loud and clear of, please do not do this again. But do not hesitate to let Dave know of any changes, any corrections, any additions, any whatever it happened to be. And we'll continue to work this as much as we can, as, well, not as much as we can, as quickly as we can to get a, however close to a final product as we can to you before the next workshop. Okay, thank you. We are now at that point in the agenda for public comments. Any other public comments? John?
I agree with Councilman Greenlee.
John, we need your name again, please.
My name is John Wagner, three six seven one zero.
Thank you.
Southeast twentieth Street, Washougal.
Thank you. And I owe you an apology before you get going. I think what you said the first time up that I hadn't called for public comments after the roll call. I'd called for them after the roll call. I didn't at the end of the meeting because we were out of time. So in the workshop, you're correct, partially.
Mr. Mayor, you never have to apologize to me and, hey, you're the mayor. Do what you want.
Don't go there. Don't go there.
You know, who's gonna argue with you? Not me. Is that a vote? No, I think start with is, I understand the change, understand the workshop. It gives me a chance. In fact, I used to go to the Kamis workshops and have to leave those early because I didn't want to miss anything out here at six o'clock. Now, I can go to Kamis, their workshop and everything, and I can be every Monday night. But on tonight's agenda for the workshop, there is no mention of any resolution of anything to do with CRC. So to the general public who would go online, which I did, and to look up your agenda for tonight, I can see online. This is what I would see online. Not something that you brought up during that workshop. So I guess I'm in favor of having the workshop and the council meeting together, but not bringing something up that's not on the agenda so that the public can't see it in advance and then voting on it the same night. That's not transparency. That's not good government. Good government is letting the public see what you're doing and having an opportunity to voice a yea or nay, whether they like it or not. And so I guess I agree right now that it should be published. And I would hope that the comments that you make to draw up this resolution, when it, I guess I'm kind of confused. Will the public get a chance to see this resolution in two weeks? Or will there be a chance for this resolution to be kind of put together, at least in draft form, so that the public can look online and think about what's in it, the provisions in it, so that they can come prepared to make comments? Or just come here and read it and?
No, I think...
And decipher it then?
I think the best answer we can give you at this point, John, is that at whatever time our agenda packets go out for the next set of meetings on the 25th, that whatever draft we have in hand at that point will probably be added to that packet.
That'd be very agreeable to me. Then at least the public can read before we get here. And I hope I'm able to make that meeting. Thank you very much.
You bet. Thanks, John. Any other items from the public? No, this is on any topic, Joe.
You know, usually when somebody comes in front of your body like this, they're usually asking you for something. When I came here...
Joe, we do need your name and address again. Sorry. I know.
I'm getting used to that. Anyhow, when I came here, and I saw this negative attitude against business development, it bothered me. And then every proposal that I made for this community wasn't anything for me, it was to give away. The first one was going to give $5 million to nonprofit organizations, and $5 million to the port, providing that the city of Waschuggal reduce their fees or remove their fees. And I never got to talk to the city council about that, and that bothered me too. But anyhow, the point I'm getting at is I was trying to serve, I was trying to give something away, and I got spit in my face because of it. And then I go to this Cuida thing, and I got insulted there too. I probably know more about economic development than those guys do because of where I've been. Don't give them any more money. I met with Evie Ovey this week. I like this guy. Evie Ovey and Berger Abram, Abrams is it Berger Abram? Abram, I think it is. These guys are good. You know what they do? They exploit the truth about where we are, where we're going, what we need. It's up to you guys to figure out, where are we now? Where are we going to be five years from now, 10 years from now? What's it going to take to get there? What are the obstacles? Remove the obstacles and make it happen. The more obstacles you have, the less freedom you have. And this whole state is full of obstacles. I used to know this country when it was a free country. Anyhow, I could talk for, I could go to a workshop and talk, spend two hours talking about all the stuff I've been through on this stuff. Right now, I've got a solution to the national foreclosure problem, and I made a presentation to Congressman Herrera, and she's trying to help me with this. Of all the politicians in Washington, she's the only one to try to do it. And the solution is so good, it's so good, and I know it could work, that Washington Mutual Bank would still be in business today, we wouldn't have had this whole foreclosure fiasco. And to have this thing played around with the politicians kind of ticks me off. But anyhow, she's still trying to help me, but I'm going to need help from the city councils, I'm going to need help from the community, I'm going to need help from, what, Clark County, I mean Clark College, I'm going to need help from Washington State University. And then, there's hundreds of millions of dollars to be distributed back into the community with the program that I've got mine. And I'm not here to brag about it or anything, but this is kind of thinking that I like to do. I love my country, and there's a lot of things we're doing that aren't right. And a lot of it has to be free enterprise. Let free enterprise get involved in community service too, and that's what I'm trying to do here. Anyhow, and don't forget the Chamber of Commerce, I'm not involved with any of these guys. It seems to me they could do more good than Cuida. I could talk a lot more, but if you want, anytime you want me to, at a workshop, I can talk to you for two, three hours about this stuff, and more. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Any other members of the public that would like to address council?
Ann Guard, 4813 K Street. Sorry, honey. I just wanted to say I was there Saturday, and I heard the same thing you guys heard. And what is amazing about the CRC and everything about that program is, everybody interprets things differently. My understanding from you folks was you wanted to hear from the constituents of Waschuggal. And we did, some of them, and we did hear from some people outside of it. But I didn't hear an equivocal, "I don't want the bridge," or "I don't want anything." I heard, "Most people aren't in favor of light rail, period." Not that they didn't want the bridge, not that they didn't want no tolls on 205, that's something that should be in your resolution. Light rail, I agree. But the bridge, I think you better think about that long and hard about what was said that day. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address council? Okay. Moving into Mayor's report, I have four items for you this evening. Two of them are in regards to schedules. In the next two weeks before our next meeting, there are two meetings coming up. One, the State of the County Address, which is this Thursday, 4:00 in the afternoon at Prairie High School. And the second one, if you have not received notifications of it, the State of the City for the City of Vancouver has been scheduled for Wednesday, March 20th, 10:00 a.m. at the Water Resources Center. And...
Excuse me, what time was that?
That's at 10:00 a.m. State of the City, 10:00 a.m., State of the County at 4:00 p.m. And then in regard to, on Saturday, we heard some updates in regards to our own local transportation projects and some things that we're trying to move forward on. David had mentioned in there the Community Development Block Grant applications that we had in, in regard to our pedestrian improvements in some of the older parts of the community. I'm happy to report this evening, we had requested $140,000 from the Community Development Block Grants, and Waschuggal has been awarded $140,000. We were the number one project out of all of the projects in there, actually kind of significantly number one, but... So that was approved, and then in addition, another one for our community, the Ace Waschuggal Community Builders, which are the folks that are looking to finalize the agreement for the Town Square Apartments, 2908 Street, had applied for two grants, one of them $100,000, and they received that full funding for that grant as well. The second one was a $50,000 one, which unfortunately was, the program was out of money at that point. So, they did receive the $100,000 one. So, at least two grant projects within our community were approved in there and confirmed this morning.
If I could just clarify, Mayor, it's the, what happened today was the Policy Board that recommends, the action to the Board of County Commissioners, recommended all of that. I would say it's next to a certainty that they will be funded when the board votes on that recommendation. It always happens that way. But not technically finally approved yet.
Gotcha.
The board acts.
And I'm sorry, I missed, you said ACE, Affordable Community Environment, Affordable Community Environment.
Right. And then the final thing, also this week on Wednesday, are the General George C. Marshall Community Awards. And one of our volunteer firemen, Jordan Bolt, who is also the manager for the Vancouver Farmer's Market, was nominated some time ago for that award and is in the top five. So, on Wednesday evening, over at the Heathman, 6:00 in the evening is that dinner. It's the first year that they've done a dinner awards to unveil who the winners are, both of the Leadership Award, which is what Jordan's up for, and also the Youth Awards as well. So, that is this Wednesday evening, 6:00 at the Heathman. That is all that I have. Any other items from council members? Connie Jo?
First, before I go into that, repeat the name of the apartment complex, the company's name is...
The company's na, well, it was applied for under Waschuggal Community Builders, is what the name that they've put under that project.
I just lost their contact information.
Leah?
For personal reasons. How do I get her contact information?
Rose, can you track down Leah's, Leah Greenwood's information?
Thank you. Okay. For the reason I raised my hand, is I want to thank Joe Lebec for coming tonight and asking us to consider a resolution about praying before each of our meetings. And I would like us, as a council, to do just that. Pray before each meeting with the primary purpose of asking God's blessing and wisdom upon the citizens of Waschuggal, and for all those making decisions affecting their lives. Possibly no more than a minute, quickly before each meeting, invite clergy that represent legitimate organizations, not religions, not, you know, that are, what's the word I'm looking for? That are established religions in our community. I would like us, I'm not sure what the procedure is, if we just have the discussion, or if I need to make a motion on that. Is that what we do there?
It is not currently part of our practice or your rules for meetings.
Are you proposing that be a workshop item?
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay.
We could certainly add that to the list.
Okay. Thank you.
Other items from council? Dave?
This is my night. First of all, it's good to see the Boy Scouts of America still active in our community. And I will tell you, young man, that being an Eagle Scout will be a distinction for the rest of your life. It is internationally recognized, and you will benefit from that recognition. I'm also an Eagle Scout, by the way. I had 31 merit badges, and my mother insisted that I finished up safety because that would give me the Eagle Scout. And I, she dragged me kicking and screaming across the finish line, and I'm so very grateful that she did. Secondly, I would, I'd like to comment tonight on a phenomenon that's been going on in this community since before I was on the council. I discovered it when I was on the Planning Commission and was liaison to the council from the Planning Commission. There are attempts periodically to shut down the conversation on a variety of subjects by excluding certain subjects that are applicable to various levels of government, and therefore all Waschuggal voters, by saying that these items are not applicable to the local level. I don't care what the issue is, if it's applicable at one level of government, it's applicable down here because we all pay taxes at all the other levels. These issues are germane, they're good subjects for council discussion. As my colleague, council member Greenlee pointed out tonight, this is the deliberative body. Let's deliberate. And I assure you that as long as I'm a member of this council, they will continue to be raised for that debate, because other levels of government are interested in the opinions of Waschuggal's elected leaders, elected representatives on these subjects. At the Town Hall two days ago, both a state senator and a county commissioner indicated their interest in the council's opinion on the CRC and light rail, and suggested that a resolution was an excellent vehicle to express our opinion. Hence, the proposal to do the resolution. I'd like to address Mr. Wagner's point this, tonight, that the proposed resolution is a summa, and tell, and just point out that the proposed resolution is a summation of public comments at Saturday's Town Hall. The public is not only aware of these comments, they made them. Using procedural obstacles to frustrate the council's conveyance of the public's opinions is inappropriate, and I will resist that. Finally, I'd like to point out that the council would convey the sense of the community on the CRC and the light rail. It was, the sense of the community's opinion was gathered not only from the Town Hall on Saturday, about which there are different interpretations of how that came out. Everybody scored it differently. But it also came from citizen comments to individual council members. I don't, I don't think I walk out into this community on any given day when I'm not approached by somebody that has an opinion that they just have to share with me about something. And I am grateful for that. At times, it's a little time-consuming, but we need, as council members, that kind of feedback, and I'm grateful for it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Just don't buy ice cream or hot coffee.
Oh, yes, and there is, there's one other thing I wanted to point out. I'm so glad that the mayor wasn't guilty of not calling for public comment tonight because it's a public flogging offense, and we wouldn't want to see that happen to a man that I consider a personal friend.
Thanks, Dave. Other items from council? Paul?
I just wanted to mention that on, what, 26th of February, which is a couple of Tuesdays ago, I went up to Kelso for a 6:00 to 8:30 in the evening training that's put on by the WCIA, Washington Cities Insurance Alliance, on Open Public Meetings Act, Open Records Act, and a fairness and fairness doctrine. It was a fascinating group. We had about 40 people in the room, including the entire Kelso City Council and mayor and much of their staff. It was an official workshop meeting of the Kelso Council. And WCIA puts those on, they're free, but if you sign up for it and you don't show up, it'll cost you 50 bucks. So, but they're, they're open to the public. On the 28th of this coming month is the blood drive at the fire station. They start taking appointments at 1:00 through 6:00 in the evening, I think it is. I'm a regular, I hope you all will join me on the 28th. The Community Coalition, which was originally funded out of a thing called the Washington State PRI, Prevention Reinvention Alliance, Investigation, or something like that. Initially, it's about substance abuse. Jennifer and I, and Connie Jo, and Karen have all attended meetings at different times. There is a survey that is out now. We would very much like you to fill out the survey. There's a locked box out there in front of City Hall where the agenda items are, and the survey itself is anonymous. We go to great lengths to keep it anonymous. If you are interested in helping with our labors, there is a separate piece of paper that you can fill out and put in the box, and we'll get in touch with you. One of the things that we will definitely need in the way of volunteer support is somebody to help us code all of those surveys and put them into the computer. So anybody who wants to get involved in the data entry problem would be a big help. The Community Coalition meets on the 4th Thursday at 4:30 in the afternoon over in the Social Services Building. We try very hard to keep our, to limit our meetings to an hour and a half, so you'll be out by 6:00. It's a public meeting, we invite everyone to come. And for John, let me commend to you a Peter Sellers movie, The Mouse That Roared. And I don't remember the name of it, but there's also a Marx Brothers movie along the same lines of, the guaranteed way to get rich is to attack, is to declare war on the United States and lose.
Joyce?
Two things. I want to thank the people that attended, David Scott and the mayor and the council for our Town Hall. It's great. I'm looking forward to more of them. The other thing I'd like to say, the Friends of the Library are looking for supporters, so join. Our library is wonderful, it serves a need in our community, and it's very inexpensive. So if you go over there and get an, get an envelope and send them your money, it's well worth it.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Yes. I've been asked by our school superintendent, Dawn Tarsian, to sit in on some interview committee times this week, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday morning. As many of you know, Ron Carlson, the principal of Jump to Guard Middle School, is retiring this year, and they'll be hiring a new principal for our middle school. So, I was asked to sit in on, be a part of the interview committee, and I feel very fortunate to have been asked to do that, have a say in the future of a school that my daughter will be attending next year, so...
Oh, my goodness.
That's important. Also, I wanted to throw another thing out there, Legislative Town Hall meeting coming up this Saturday, is that correct? 2:00 at CAMUS High School, as far as... As far as I know, that's still happening, and so don't forget, if you want to be at a Legislative Town Hall meeting with Senator Rivers and Representative Pike, and I'm not sure if Representative Vick will be there as well, but it sounds like it would be interesting.
What time's that start?
That's at 2:00.
Thank you.
There's another one earlier in the day in another part of Clark County. Is it, is it Battleground? All right. Let's see, what else? That is all I have.
Dave? Connie Jo?
C-Trans meeting, which normally meets on the 2nd Tuesday of every month, which would be tomorrow, the 12th, has been postponed until the 19th. If anybody wants to come have some fun with me, I get really lonesome down there, no Waschuggalites ever come out that way, but 19th. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other items from council? I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.